How do we handle when they, when a pond provider wipes out a big zone? They spray it, it dies, it's gonna fall over. Historically, in Pelican, we do not pay to have that harvested. If it's there because of their poor performance and negligence.
It's on them.
Then they bring in the harvest that they have for years at no charge.
Cause if you're doing, if you're doing regular maintenance, that's not an issue.
You won't get to that. That's exactly the point.
Yes.
I agree.
Hundred percent agree.
Yeah. Okay. So regarding parks and recs, the botchy, uh, the botchy courts, it says that we've, we were going out for proposals. And it specifically says installing rock and rock apron around the perimeter. That is exactly what the botchy court uses if they do not want.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of this was, this was done pre.
Yeah, just because it says it's the proposal, the proposal were requested. So either you just say, don't worry. Because mainly they're senior citizen, it's too narrow, walking on rocks when they're doing that, it's just, you're, we're trying to kill them. So I would not go any further with that.
Okay.
Why isn't Tim here?
He, cause he's hungry. Right there.
I can speak to him.
Oh, I thought we were gonna have the department head do these.
He's the department head for public works, Parks and Rec falls under public.
Cause we haven't had him for a long time.
Well, I know, but I thought we posted that the department heads.
Yeah, he is. Tim was doing it because we didn't have anybody.
Okay, so quick, just one quick comment. You have the, the soccer field light line striping. I know that these markers already exist. So just be aware, there is rebar buried on those fields or, or I should say indicators. So when you have somebody come out there to do this, just keep in mind, there's probably pre-existing stuff already there.
Yeah.
I don't know if we wanna pull it out or if we leave it, we go over top of it, just know.
Yeah, I would pull it out. So we have only one clear marker there.
Yeah, just know there's, I mean, there might be a pirate's booty over there of rebar. I don't, I don't know.
Where abouts is?
At the soccer field, they, um, when they mark the fields, they have markers. What they do is they kinda just bury rebar and then they use a, um.
Oh, straight.
Well, they use like a, a metal detector to find the points so they could stripe it. So just wanna give you a heads up.
And then the final thing is under Parks and Repairs Maintenance. You just, I think there's a copy and paste, so it's double. On page three thirty-two. I mean, three thirty, yeah, thirty-two.
Yeah, like three of them.
Uh, yeah. Five, six of them. So, no, and then lastly, plant boat, uh, the mulch. I know we're gonna do mulch now, but I know. I've been at, we've been all asking for the mulch, but usually we don't put mulch like right in the rainy season.
Yeah, it's gonna wash out.
So I, while we really wanted it, we wanted this in November when it was due. But are we gonna waste our time putting the mulch out there because of the rainy season?
Yeah, I mean, it's your call. I mean, some of those beds look.
Oh, they're horrible.
Poor condition, so we may have some loss, but.
How about we do an alternative? I mean, why don't we do ponds or just something, something else that won't flush away?
Pines will flush away even more than.
Okay, nevermind. I'll shut up.
But it is a thought, like, so then we can prioritize the ones that, that will now wash away.
Like high priority areas and leave out.
That's what I would go with it. I would go with that. I, I think the sixty grand that we had on, on budget is, it's low. I think it's gonna be over budget if you're gonna do everything and I have not seen your, the proposal yet. So I would prioritize.
We're sitting at fifty thousand for the whole thing.
Oh, okay. Bye.
So it's up to you. I mean, do it all and then we do it again in about.
Then that's it. I don't have anything else.
That's good though.
I will have us for a field report. Any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Nope.
Hey, do you got any?
Here we go.
Gotta start with the joke.
Okay, so we're, we'll have. Got extra page there? So. I don't know if everybody had a chance to talk to Chelsea on, on one-on-one regarding her review. I know I did.
I did.
Yeah.
I had a schedule.
Okay, so how do you guys want?
Before we do that, if I can. Got quite a few emails in last weekend, notes and other things about. Seems to be some disagreement. With what's going on in Stony Brook with landscaping issues, scope of work, direction providers, et cetera. Anybody else heard any of these kind of things?
We all got that.
Uh, yeah, we all heard it.
Well, emails.
Yeah, emails.
Yeah. I got emails, calls, name it.
Yeah, I've had all of it. So some of them, some of the calls. Or the notes troubled me. So what I guess I'm going to ask is, we've heard this for one month. Like the chair. Get to the bottom of some of the. Continuations in there that are challenged, that need to be considered in this.
So you like to, so what are you saying is you want, and then you, you may have to revise your, your, your.
Possible, yes.
Okay.
So, uh, there's some he said, she says, and I wanna make sure. Unbiased at first as we get, get to the bottom of it.
Okay. So I would like for then you to forward the emails that you have from Chelsea, just because I don't wanna assume that the same concerns that went to you were.
You got it.
So if you've, if any of you guys have.
Given the concerns.
Or send it to Tony and then Tony can forward them all to me. And if they're all the same, then I'll address it. Most of them were able to iron out in the last two days.
Well, the biggest issue that I had was is. Accusations that are written, that there was some bold-faced lies still. That's, that's the part. Somebody's wrong, let's flush it out. I don't wanna be tagging our district manager if she's not done anything wrong. If the other people are, then we'll just say, hey, don't BS us. And of course, the corollary is if there was some real misleading, then not like.
Then we'll address it as it comes. So I, I, I were under requirement to, to have her review done at the one-year anniversary or prior to Tony? Is, or can, do I have, do we have the authority to extend it for another month?
I don't think you need a month. I don't think you need a month. I think you.
Oh, I don't think so. I think I'm, I'm thinking.
Next meeting, whatever, whatever.
Yeah. No, I mean, you're delivering of your review. Do you, do you mind the? Okay. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Okay. Okay, so then that's. So then, then we'll, we'll just table that all together. I would say, yes.
Yeah.
I, I would say the whole thing. So I need a motion. Bobby made a motion. We have a motion by Bob, second by Ed for the next meeting. To review all the emails that will be sent to Tony and reach out to Tony. We try to get to the bottom of it. Update the board. I'll update Tony and then Tony can update the board.
Yeah, start earlier.
The bid protest is next meeting?
Yes.
Cause we can't do anything until we get that resolved, Kelly. But I mean, is somebody making a presentation or what, what, what are we waiting?
What is?
Oh, okay, okay.
So are you saying early?
You're up next.
I have a motion in a second and. Yes.
So what, uh, the statements made from Stony Brook is determined by annual review.
No.
No.
And that's not the way out of it.
The findings, findings of those statements made is, I mean.
But have an impact on the review, yes.
And.
But maybe only for.
Maybe not.
Your two commissioners.
Yeah.
I just, I'm gonna be quick. It may or may not.
It may or may not.
It may or may not.
Um, why don't we, so in order to streamline some of that, you've already had, you've been in conversations with, with Stony Brook. You've been engaged with that for months, you know, uh, maybe not at the level that you have been in the last week or so. Why don't you do your due diligence and, you know, prior to the next meeting, if you could work with Tony to write.
A memo.
A memo, had that delivered and that way the board will know, okay, there's an issue, there's not an issue.
Yeah, it sounds great.
That way we don't have to have open, a lot of open discussion. If there's not an issue, then it's not an issue.
Well, a lot of this stuff just has come out recently. I just got mine with the, the last week.
Yeah, I've had a lot in the last four days.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I have a lot. I mean, I, I had a lot prior to attending the retreat meeting and a lot of things got clarified at the meeting.
There's a lot of stuff floating around.
There's a lot of stuff.
Resident and I know there's a lot of information going around that's not.
I'm not. Everybody's calling me and I'm saying, call you guys.
Yeah, so I, I attended the meeting. I think it went extremely well, right? All things considered, I think. I, I mean, it was very clear. There was absolutely some misconception. There was definitely some misunderstanding. And then when I left the meeting, there was only one item that the residents and the board needed clarification. So I think I was able to cover all with the residents. And I left knowing that I only owe them one answer for one particular item, uh, which I already mentioned to, uh, you know, Tony and it's regarding. If they take over everything, the O four.
My issue is not to do with any of that kind of detail.
So that's the only thing that asked. Everything else was iron out. So doesn't affect her.
Some of this stuff, what I will give you, there are specific accusations.
But, but I'm talking about the issue of the, the takeover. That doesn't have anything.
No, it has nothing to do with her. Everything else was ironed out at the, as far as I know. Okay, so I will work that. So we have.
Might have some feedback, but it's not the issue.
Yeah, so we have a motion by Bob, we have a second by Ed, all in favor to delay Chelsea, to table Chelsea's into the next meeting.
Aye.
Aye.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Always, absolutely. It's always two sides.
Yeah.
Maybe nothing more than a, I know what I told you, but I don't know what you heard. You, you know, you've known of that too.
I think everybody got the letters.
Yeah, okay. What's next?
District attorney.
What I'm gonna hand out is. Lobby of procedure for the best hearing and if you can pass these down. You don't have to read this just at all now. Have it in hand or be in the agenda packet. Meeting. And I'll suggest that because of all the other items. We're also going to do is we're gonna. These divers also. Just provide them the opportunity. They are the party team. And I would process and the hearing's gonna be limited to the argument.
Does this cover what was raised, the issues that you're talking about?
It will. That's the procedure and you will cover the issue at the meet, at the next meeting.
Got it.
So it's at five o'clock.
Yes, it'll.
Well, they'll talk on Thursday, May twenty, uh, every. Protest and party issues, their vacuum is, its vacuum is, and then it's. Team diver question, this if they get removed and be.
Cause we have a meeting next Thursday.
Yes, no, no, it's gonna be at the, at the end of the next meeting.
In our June first.
At our June first meeting.
For the June first meeting. I thought we were meeting again next week.
So, uh, just briefly, uh, the DSA district followed up with Charles Mann. Bit pieces here and there. Products we did, up again, I have. Received no additional information from the Alphabell. Talk the. Status of it. I have the initial. Opinion which. Say, oh, we need it by night. Power damage. Things filing. Yeah, it's about the county. On the Pelican Reserve. And group doctor feeding on that. I gotta really address with my strength. We have a good meetings with, uh, S Row. S Row's already taken that survey. They're able to get, figured it on top of the prior work. Term of what interest. Stop noticing that's all. In building. Think we only might, we need to fire access. He's been still abstaining, I think.
So all those have been prepared. Chelsea indicated earlier, she's trying to get it to the Hampton Park people to get that resolved.
Tony, if I can, before we leave the Pelican Reserve easement thing, there was also a meeting this week that Carol and Chelsea were in that. Where now you've been instructed to provide. Whatever form we want, Avila to agree.
Chelsea, Chelsea already forwarded me the results and said prepare the agreement, uh, easement, uh, the maintenance agreement. And I understand that she's going to be getting some condominium documents from the management company indoor association. I'll look at those just to make sure that.
I just wanted, we started the first.
Right, so.
Be at least seven or eight up, but at least we finally started.
Oh, yeah, I'd like, I mean, I wanna get this out and, uh, the draft of it out over the weekend so that Chelsea has on a Monday to give to the, uh, the Pel, the Avia people. And I just need to check the condominium documents to see if there's any requirements for any authorization other than by the boards. I usually put that representation in the grant. That all the authority authorizations exist. Uh, the interlook agreement, uh, Chelsea made that presentation, the board approved it earlier. That was. Longer than it should have. I just said it out there. Board policies, procedures, uh, gonna be, be meeting with Chelsea on that. Tomorrow, start talking about that or. Comments and concerns. Uh, Earthview, we talked about the Earthview bid protest. Tony Brook Roads and Streets had a conversation with Joe Adams from the county attorney's office. The county attorney is adamant that that one statute, three sixteen point one twenty-five applies as specific. Over general statute that addresses conveyance of roads. And what I'm proposing is that Chelsea and I and Lavia meet with the Stony Brook Association Board. Representatives and their attorney to go over a template for the process to use, go through the statute and say, you know. The template for the process to get the necessary written consent that the county wants. And part of that is to get a form and a document that the county will accept. So say, here's a proposed document. Is it, can be in a form of a ballot? And a, and a vote cast. It does have to be a separate standalone written instrument. And so I wanna, we wanna work with the Stony Brook Board to work on that document and then present it to Joe Adams and say, here's the document we wanna use. Will you guys accept this? If you take four, if you get four fifths of the property owner signing this, well, that'd be good enough. So that's what, just meant to make sure we, we don't create a document, get a re-signing it, and the county attorney's office said, nope, it's a long document. Gulf Card says we're taking care of FGU, FGUA interconnect. I provided my comments on the proposed agreements with FGUA and on the wholesale wastewater and wholesale potable. I do need to look again at the acquisition agreement to make changes there because there's a definition of service area in customers that needs to be amended. And streetlight ownership, I've had the pleasure of going back to nineteen eighty-eight. And a number of minutes and then sending that along to Mr. Tinkelman and Chelsea today, informing the Gateway Greens ownership. I talked to Rick Bry Lansky. And Rick has, uh, Holmontez was the engineer at the time for most of that. And he has boxes, he said, of items. He's gotta call through them for any plans and specifications for street lighting. So, it's very nice of Rick to do that.
Any questions? So Tony, I have more.
One other thing that's not on here. I understand that you sent a letter or sending a letter relative sunshine laws to the Pelican Reserve and, uh, Community Association. To, under the, under the umbrella of, there's been a discussion within PPAC of moving the three subcommittees or maybe them, their entire thing. Over to the Pelican Reserve Community Association, much like Stony Brook did. The, the linchpin of that decision, which will be a. PPAC decision first, but our second, is there some thoughts that if we went on the PPCA, the requirements of sunshine might be much easier or not even exist?
Chelsea reminded me to make contact with Steve Adamsik, the attorney for Pelican Reserve Community Association. To have a conversation with him with regards to a number of attorney generals opinions. That address the issue of whether or not a not-for-profit or a private organization delegated a governmental function to subject to the sunshine law and public records law. So I mean, cause he's the attorney, Steve Adamsik, has to advise PPCA. This is just advising him. Here is the attorney general's opinion. Let's talk about it. Just make sure you are in board.
Because the one question for PPAC is if sunshine doesn't apply going over there, it might look a lot more attractive. If it's pretty much the same, cause you're still managing public assets, then it'd be no point in discussing. But that's kinda where we're at. But I wanted the board to be aware that that was at least taking place.
Yeah, I mean, do I agree with all the attorney general's opinions? Not necessarily. I've had that, I've said that many, many times. They make a leap from public records law to sunshine law, that. Anyway, so, but it, but, but they're out there. There are a number of them that are.
They're working on it. That's why. Wanted all your agents.
Hey, do you have anything for Tony?
No.
Yeah, nope. Okay, so the only thing that I have, just follow up with the Stony Brook Roads and Streets. One item, and so it's kinda back to what I was mentioning regarding Chelsea. So one item at the meeting that, uh, residents, um, actually the, the board, one of the board members, um. Reached out and was, if they would take, if it were to come that they have, you know, the eighty percent of the community to take the roads and so forth. What would happen to the O four money? Would we keep it? Would we give it back?
Goes right to them.
And I did, I said, I don't know the answer. I can tell you if it's legally what I would do, but I can't speak on behalf of the other four and I don't know if we can do it. So I reached out to Tony. And Tony is going to talk with Russ, right, Tony?
Yeah, and also do a little research. I mean, my first inclination was, and shoot from the hip, which I don't like to do. Was that it'd either be refunded or be applied as a credit to the next general fund assessment coming year. But it's not the district's money. It's the, it came from them and it's, it's predicated upon a benefit accruing to their property and. The pay for the operation and maintenance of district assets that benefit their properties.
Okay, so that was the question that I guess once you have it, I will like, you know, once you get it all. Then we, we can deliver that to them and, and what we stand, the, the plan was, once I get the letter from Tony, I would have forwarded to the Stony Brook HOA board. Us, and they would have passed that information along the residents. And then I, we will like to work on, I would like to work with you on the pros and cons of turning the road over because there was. Majority of the questions that we had, it was, well, if the district, if everything stays the way it is and the roads need to be fixed, then the district will pay for it. Like, yes, but with your money.
Yeah.
With O four. So there was a lot of, um. Misunderstanding and unknowing. So I think to have one clear document that will, will tell. The rest is because they're the one that are gonna be making those decisions. And I told them that, I, because they actually wanted their HOA board to say, well, what is your stance? And I said, don't even bother putting them because there's only seven votes. You guys have the power. So if, if, if eighty percent of you guys say yes and your entire board say no, you guys go. If the entire CDD board says yes, and then your entire HOA board says yes, but you don't have eighty, it doesn't go. So the power lays on you and you guys make the decision. And.
Kind of a template for what Pelican will do. If they would decide to move over, they got five million dollars.
So it, it's on the residents. So I, I would like the residents to have all the information so they can get educated and they can make the decision from themselves. With facts. And I think that's will be helpful is that information comes from you after, you know, feedback and, and putting all the heads together.
What I would think would be helpful, it's almost like what, what the staff did, frequently asked questions and had a bond issue. And I think that we, I think it'd be helpful to work with Chelsea and Laura when we do that, you know, cause from an operational perspective also, you know, from legal and then an operational perspective.
Okay.
Well, the big issue is, is the guardhouse. The guardhouse is the, that is exactly right. If we keep it, the guardhouse is gonna be gone. No doubt about it.
That's your vote. I know that's your vote.
Yeah, you can't, it's not legal. Not legal. TBD.
Staff, staff, staff that started working on it.
That's way far, yeah. So I, I, I think once we give the residents all their options and let them make that decision, I think it'll be a lot easier and a lot smoother for us. And I think we'll be. Pretty surprised.
Of what? They don't wanna do debt financing or if they don't wanna do capital reserve studying deal and they wanna do debt financing, that would give them all the authority in the world to do it that way.
And I, I conquer all of that at the meeting. I, I, if you want this, you can have it.
A special assessment.
Careful what you ask for.
All right.
It's very expensive.
So nothing else from Tony, uh, agenda management?
Our next meeting is for.
What time you want to start the next meeting?
We can change it, right? Because you already posted.
Change it. We can do amended. We have a workshop beforehand. I think Chelsea, right? Those workshops, is that a budget?
Before the June meeting?
The workshop is at two o'clock on June first.
Okay. And there's no set topic yet. Is that for budget?
It'll be budget, going to be budget.
And we'll have all the stuff on the capital as quick as you guys can get it. That, that to me is going to make or break them.
I spent half my day today on that, so hopefully Laura will loop back tomorrow.
Three, four are going this time.
She's not gonna believe that's the accident.
So if, if you do the budget at two. Start the regular meeting at three. Four, and then you've got that thing scheduled for five.
No, that's good. You know, it's, it's, it's not gonna be tight. I would suggest it not be a time certain.
It's.
That it kills me the last item.
Yes.
This is for the.
The bid protest. Again, I, I would suggest not this set of time, sir. There's no need to set a time, sir.
Okay.
Some of these items, after looking at this, cause I was out last week when this got pushed out, um, will probably be delayed, a, a, a meeting or two.
You can't do everything.
Any, is there anything that you would like us to work on or reprioritize or?
Capital reserve, capital reserve, capital reserve.
So let me, let me ask you this. So, uh, five, uh, the ninth, which is two weeks from now. The president council meeting, it's gonna be a Pelican, Pelican preserve. Do we have an agenda for that or not yet?
No, is there something you guys would like?
No, I was thinking giving everything that's happened with Stony Brook. And I know it's a president's council meeting. Would it be in our best benefit to hold it there instead of Pelican Preserve? And then we'll be there and, you know, it's open to the, to the public. So if we have residents that wanna ask question in addition to the HOA board members.
I have a problem.
I have a problem.
Well, the only thing is, do you, do you want to require people to come to the president's council, council meeting? In Stony Brook for the whole, whole purpose of centralizing it and then hijacking that meeting to talk about Stony Brook? Like, that's not, I don't know if that's appropriate for the other presidents. I would much rather just do a, a town hall meeting.
A town hall, okay. I, I think there's.
Okay, with that too, whatever.
I'm thinking there's a benefit.
We can't, it doesn't, doesn't mean we can't have that conversation to let everyone know.
Yeah.
Like this is something that they're going through.
He'll take it.
Yeah, okay. So that's, I don't have anything. No, to add.
Is there, and, uh, I heard mention of a town hall meeting. Do we want to schedule that?
I think it's gonna depend upon how quick you guys get that letter, form of letter back over to the attorney. Cecil is just waiting to get it because he, he wants to ramrod that through. And I told him, I said, that's, that is critical. Last thing we wanna do is we do something and then we get stabbed in the back by your attorney. It's not gonna be pretty.
Well, I'm telling you, and, and you, you probably know this more than anyone. In order to get eighty percent of that vote, it's gonna take a committee. It's gonna take. Grassroots, door to door. I mean, you know, you've gone for, it's, it's gonna take some time.
It, well, the biggest.
Or at least it's gonna take effort.
Thing is gonna take is the truth.
Yeah.
They are so, have been so misinformed, it's not funny.
Yeah.
That's all to do with that stupid guardhouse. It is that just insanity that we have allowed it to do this for all these years.
Okay, so we're good then?
Yep.
Uh, so to answer, let's hold on that. In two weeks we meet again. Hopefully Tony and I will get everything in order and then. Schedule it on a, what, what was, what is the notice requirement? Thirty days for a town hall meeting or no?
No, it can be seven, uh, it's just a town hall meeting. I'd say seven, just to be on the safe side.
All right, that's all fine.
And it can just be in the paper.
All right.
If you just let me know. I can put the other, send it to the paper.
And the town hall topic? Just road transfer, is that correct?
Well, it'll be every, O four, fun.
Okay.
Everything, so roads, landscaping, uh, name it, everything that falls under there category.
So we're picking a date right now to do?
We won't pick a date because we only need a seven days notice and we need Tony and I to get the information.
Yeah, the answering question sheet, question and answer sheet, the form of the documents and also talk with your attorney.
I just can't picture why that letter can't be something immensely simple. I, I, I don't understand why.
Cause Tony's right.
No, I, and, and I, I, I agree, and, and I agree with the concept of trying to make it simple, but again, I don't know what. I, I wanna make sure that the person that reviews it at the county says, okay, this is the form that I will accept. And I don't want to say, assume that's a simple, I am in agreement, I consent.
Listen, when I read statue, I told Tony, I said, all he says is in writing, a napkin. Listen, when I read statue, I told Tony, I said, always says it in writing, a napkin will do it. But I understand your point, and I, and I don't want to.
Well, you can always include just a summary, here's, here's the high points, here's, you know, what you need to know. And then here's the twenty-eight pages behind it with, uh, with our legal opinion. Not to say you're gonna have twenty-eight pages.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah.
But no, no, I mean, I, I.
Simple overview summary, and then with supporting.
Again, the, the format that was used that Chelsea and Laura came up with for the FAQ. It's really helpful.
All right, supervisor's comments, Bob? Ed?
Nothing.
Oh, wait a minute, wait, we did. We had an attaboy for somebody over.
I gave it earlier during, uh, local.
Yeah, people in Pelican give out the way to compliment this guy for what he did, and the person. Yeah, I want to make sure we all heard, thank you.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nope.
Yeah. Not to prolong the obvious, but, um. Uh, in, in, uh, going through, uh, the review document, uh, the evaluation document that we u- used. For Chelsea's evaluation. It got me thinking that. I'm relatively new to this board, I mean, I think I've been here maybe six months now. And it seems to me that this board. Could benefit by having a vision of where the board wants to take this district. And I don't think, I don't think you guys have it right now. And so I would like to propose that sometime in early fall. Hopefully, before we start the, the next budget year, that we have a, um. Workshop, uh, that we would invite a, um. Facilitator to come in, so it's not from the district. And we have an honest conversation about. The district, where we think the district should be going. How the district should get there, what's the vision for. Where we need to go forward to. Where are we going?
Where do we want to be at five years?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and where do you want to, and then back that back?
Yeah, we'll probably do, because we, we have had those in the past, we had a vision twenty twenty plan.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Yeah, um. And so we've had, we've done these similar board advances in the past, and we'll probably do it for one, um, so, yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
But I, I want this to come from the board, from staff. I think staff should be there, I think Laura and Chelsea should be there, and anybody else that they want to. But I think the vision has to be the board's vision, not staff's vision.
Yeah.
I see that.
And from everything, and talking with you guys, it seems like, um, this was. A small utility and was run like a small utility for a long time. I get the idea that maybe. It's not that anymore.
I don't think that, I don't think that's been our approach for the past five to six years.
Yeah.
I think we, I think that's, I think we have talked about a much larger, grander plan. Um, but yeah, I think, I, I think. Revisit that, make sure we always have a vision, what is our vision, what is our vision?
We have.
Where are we going?
We've reacted a lot to what the developer caused at this community to begin with. And that is worry about selling homes and keep prices low and kick the can down the road. For the last four or five years, I think we've got that turned around. But when you do that, now you get the results, we're now getting in some of the, the blogs. What the hell you building that building for? Here and all the time, and it's getting louder and louder. It'll all come to a head when we take the bids and we'll see what we're, we're either in budget or we're not in budget. But that's the big ticket item on the street, at least in my community, that's the big ticket item. What are you doing? You do it.
But if we know where we're going. You can tell them, this is what we're doing.
We're gonna be going to a tent if we don't have something.
Well, anyway.
You can't do nothing.
I would like to do that early fall.
Okay, sounds, would you add that to it? All right, anything else?
Yep.
No, all right, so I need motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right.